Well, good evening, everyone, if you'd join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, good evening, everyone, thanks for joining us for the Town of Rutland Select Board meeting for November 12th, 2019. Thank you. We're going to get started here with the approval of the orders of any board members. Any board members have any questions about the orders? Good. Approval of Select Board minutes of October 29th. Were there any corrections, deletions, or additions?
Let's see, so only two of us are here, so we can't do anything.
All right, we'll put those off till next meeting. Is there any questions from the floor, public comment, anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to speak? Seeing none. So I had, we had some exciting here, we consider ourselves all family in this room, and as far as I'm concerned, our family grew a little bit bigger last week. We've invited Robin Sweet and their son Carter. This is Bill's wife and son, and Bill and Robin have, for the last five years, have been dedicated foster parents to over 30 children and youth in our community. And it took 946 days for this young man to become a Sweet. So on November 5th, Bill and Robin were blessed to complete the adoption of Carter, and Carter is now Bill and Robin's fifth and youngest child. So I wanted to have them come, and we as a board want to have them come and congratulate them, and we got a couple of gifts here. We got something for you, Robin, and Bill, so if you want to come up and get this. And then, Carter, come on up. I figured you could take after your dad, and we got you a fire truck, all right? So here's a brand-new fire truck for you, all right? Share with your siblings. And here's a little something for you guys. Congratulations, all right?
Do you say "thank you"?
Welcome to the family, all right, Carter? You're more than welcome to stay, but I wouldn't blame you if you leave, so. So, thanks for coming. Any further comments, questions from the floor? All right, we're going to go right to your dad, Carter, Bill Sweet.
Do we want to take that?
No, we're going to pause on Bill Sweet, we're going to go to Ralph instead.
No problem.
Ralph, how are you?
Fine, thanks.
Great. So I turn it over to the Energy Committee Chair of John Paul, and we met at 5 o'clock tonight, correct?
We did, and we looked over that memorandum of lease that you and Kevin and we, I recommended the full board sign it tonight, so we can move ahead.
Okay, we signed the option-to-lease agreement and authorized our chair to sign on behalf of the Town of Rutland.
Motion by Mary, seconded by John Paul, for discussion. This is with Green Lantern. We've had long discussions with you folks about this, and the board felt comfortable tonight, so glad we got to this point. I brought up, once again, to them the screening concerns that I had, and the committee assures me they're going to work with you folks and figure out a way to make it look a little less visible in that one opening. I think the tree line does a nice job of screening it naturally, but a little spot there that maybe we could tighten up. But besides that, any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. So do we have a copy I can sign?
Oh, I just marked mine up.
Do you have, is there one in here, Billy?
[inaudible]
Okay.
Thank you. So I'm going to change this to November. Witness for the purpose of this option lease on this. Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you. And I can report that this project will bring a growing family of very similar projects that use municipal land, in almost all cases it's a landfill, for a sort of modest-sized solar project. We're literally right at the point now of turning on almost identical arrays in Wilmington, Dover, and Powell, and there's one that's been operating for about a year in New Haven. And we're beginning to sort of connect the dots and see this as a major area of our business. It's not just in these counties, it's also up north, in places like Starkspore and Cambridge.
Where do you live, Ralph?
I live in Brownsville.
In Brownsville, yep. Did you want to sign this tonight, so then we can make copies for ourselves and give you a copy, or?
Sure, I can, we have to do that.
Okay. Bill, you want to come up, Ralph?
Thanks.
Here. All right. And then we'll get a copy of this over to you as soon as we get it back to Town Hall and Bill gets some copies, okay?
Yeah.
Great, yeah, fantastic.
All right.
So what's the next step?
Well, next step, generally, is to tell everybody and get us working on a design.
Okay.
I've actually already got there with our design analysis and our construction laws, just really sort of for short visits to get oriented. Because of the season, the wetlands delineation, rare species and control and stuff will have to wait until it starts to get warmer, but there's a lot of stuff we can do in the meantime.
Okay.
So, it's a step-by-step process. Building plans.
Just a quick heads up, and this is nothing that we voted on or decided, but it's possible we may locate a salt shed next to the existing salt shed.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, just so you know, but I think it's far enough down it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't do any shading up there.
Okay.
Yeah, so, just so you know.
Yeah, I think that there's about four acres to work with, but a 150-kilowatt array is probably all we're going to need about acre.
Okay.
And probably push it back sort of up high, closer to the top of the other side.
Okay.
And get away from the visual contact.
That'd be great.
Yes, thanks.
What, once you begin construction, how long does that last?
Well, we have to get a permit first.
Right.
With construction processes, and especially since last case, we would be laying ballast blocks on top of the surface, we wouldn't even be drilling or pounding close to the ground. So the array will go up in probably six to eight weeks. But, you know, where we are right now this time of year, we probably have a permit late spring, early summer, and then see construction next summer.
Sure. Any further questions for Ralph? Thanks for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Drive safe.
Now we're going to go to Bill Sweet, please. How are you, Bill?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that, that was great. All right, so, few things to go through here. So number one is the committee items, a bunch of meetings this morning, and you have minutes for highway and police on your desks from this morning. Kirsten had asked, she needs a, her and Andrew need a finance committee meeting sooner or later, so if Josh and JP are up for the meeting, if you can get together and figure out a time, that would be, they're asking for that so they can follow up the audit.
I can do next Monday, the rest of my week is shot. Monday, are you available on Monday?
I'm available.
Okay. Want to just check with Kirsten to have Andrew, see what Andrew works?
Yep.
Okay.
Number two is a request from Fire Department 5 to use the meeting room. It's going to, it would be June 18th, so that should be next Monday. Kirsten said she'd be available, actually not available that night, but Kirsten said she would be available to help with that. They want to start at 7:00. They are, and I put it here, they're asking, Kirsten, you put a note on the bottom here for the fee for the room to be waived, and I said that would be, she asked me, and I said that wouldn't, I'd give it to you guys if you wanted to do that.
Well, how, who would be, I mean Kirsten's not going to come volunteer a time to open the room.
I wouldn't think so.
Her fee's $25 an hour, right?
Yes. And the minimum is two hours.
Well, if they want to use the room during business hours, it's, there's no charge.
Right, and I did tell her that, that I said that, you know, it is after hours, so there will be a charge, because nobody here, so she had, she had asked if the, she had two questions, one, if she could use the room, and two, if her fee could be waived, I said I, I didn't know that it could be, because it was outside of time.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair we incur an expense for like that for some tax, I don't think there's any way.
Can I, I have some off there. They asked me to come to that meeting, I told them I wanted to do this meeting. Don't let your code, I can, you know, have a plan on making that noise.
I'm okay with it. If you're going to be there, chief, you have a code anyway to the building.
Thank you. I don't have one to keep it on.
Is the board okay with?
Yeah.
The department head being there? Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, chief.
So does that mean we waive the fee because there's no expense because the department head is there? I'm confused.
Correct. Well, Ed's a salaried employee.
The way it's happened in the past, if there wasn't a town employee attending, there was no charge, there was never any part of there where we're going to charge additionally.
Because that's essentially what we're charging the fee for. Okay, gotcha.
Every group that wants to meet just asks the Chief of Police to be there.
That's right.
No, or somebody else.
I think it's a bad precedent, but.
Number three, our copies of.
We're going to table that for now.
Okay, no problem. Number four, just mainly for your information, was.
Oh, yeah.
Correspondence regarding some Jones' College joining lawsuit. That sounds like, it's weird, the town is automatically enrolled unless they do specific words.
This is the opioids class action lawsuit, so.
Okay.
And number five is from Chris, has a copy of file revisions from the fire department.
Okay, we'll hold on to those for the chief.
Number six is an agreement that needs to be approved incentive letter from efficiency Mark that is for each project that he is doing. So once we give, once we get approval, last meeting to move ahead with the project, we form the letter, and that needs to be approved.
Okay, so this would give the town a bonus incentive rebate of $4,200.
Correct.
All right, in that case, I will move to approve and authorize our chair to sign on behalf of the Select Board.
Motion by Mary, seconded by John Paul. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The electric company we're using for this is?
Remind, you do have good copies of that original whole thing.
Okay, I'll just put, I just wrote on it, so they'll accept it.
Yep.
Number seven?
Number seven was for funds to be received from the Secretary of State. They're doing a state tour, transparency tour, and inviting people to attend the meetings.
That was November 5th, so.
And we missed it.
We're a little behind on that one.
Well, we didn't get it until November 4th, so.
They didn't really want us to show up, that means.
Number eight is from North Star Fireworks.
Tell us, tell us the conversation you and I had the other day, tell us about that.
So this letter came from them, they're saying since 4th of July lands on a Saturday, they said it presents them with a little more of a challenge. If we want to have our fireworks on the 4th of July, as we have done in the past, we will be given private scheduling because we've done that. If we elect to not have them on 4th of July, we would get a discount on our display. So.
Wasn't there somewhere in here that says if we want to have them on the 4th, we should plan on a budget increase?
Yes, it said if, yeah, they give flexible dates, that it would be a cost increase on that.
The third one, the fourth paragraph down talks about tariffs and regulations and licensures, and so it looks like we should probably, as we do the general budget, we could probably look at a small increase for fireworks.
Or do them Friday night, and take the discount.
Well, how much is the discount?
Was it five per?
Well, no, we got a discount for prepaying, which are pretty hefty, you know, 10% discount by January 1st.
And we've done that in the past.
Yes, we have.
Do they give us anything for happening on July 3rd, Friday night? Friday night?
Well, that's, that's what it implies. I did not hear back from them in time for tonight, so.
So I think you get the regular discount if you move it off of the 4th, but if you get the, if you want it on the 4th, plan on spending more money.
That's, that's the impression that I got.
So we don't know any numbers, though.
Right.
Well, we can't vote on anything, because we don't know numbers.
If you could have numbers for our next meeting, maybe, if they would provide something, an incentive to move it to the 3rd or 5th.
Maybe we could talk to Mike if that's what we want to do, but.
Not a traditional.
What have you thought about when your Town Hall celebration is going to be, maybe you retire it to that and go away from the 4th, just throwing that idea out. Like if you have your fine black.
Have that on the same day.
It's the same as Town Hall celebration, have it that night, and then it's not a, it might make more sense for the day itself, and then it's.
Temple White celebrations.
Might be that, that's Saturday, June. Would have to be on the 4th, now it's, if they're going off, well, then really it's not the 4th. You celebrate the 4th on the 3rd, while we celebrate the 4th on, you know, 28th, what's the difference?
Right, that's a Saturday, right?
Oh, um.
Celebrate Christmas on the 26th.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we get the numbers, and then why don't we schedule a Rec Committee meeting? And we can incorporate Town Hall celebration as well. I think we can discuss that, because Joey just said maybe, what if we moved it to the 27th?
That was your Town Hall celebration. Do it on the 27th and do it all together. I have often thought that that's what we should do, anyway.
So.
Let's, let's have, we should definitely be.
All right, you'll work on that, Bill. All right, thanks.
Number nine is from Chief Jimmison for them.
We'll wait for the chief on that.
That completes everything in the package. On your desk is a updated copy of budget. All of the departments have that at any point, so they're all in that. That's the updated copy for you, JP, that incorporates the Council on Health, Office of Defense. In the orders, there was a bill from Watershead Consulting Associates. When they sent us the bill, they included an invoice that was billed to them by a contractor for services that they contracted on our behalf to do, and we got a copy of the contractor's invoice included in our bill. And when I looked at our bill and the contractor's invoice, there was a discrepancy, and I asked them that, and I said, why is what you're billing is more expensive than what they billed you? I said, we mark them up 10%. And they sent me the invoice and deleted the attachment of the contractor, but we already had it, so it was in your, it was in your invoice, and actually Susan had asked me about that as well, and I said, that was what I got from them, is that any outside work that's done for them on our behalf is marked up 10% when they receive it. So it was, I thought it was a little strange, but I didn't know if you'd seen that in the orders, but I did question them on.
So which did we approve?
We approved the invoice as it was submitted to us.
With the additional 10%.
Yes.
Well, I mean, it sounds like a contractor when they, you know, renovate and they add 10% to the material costs or whatever.
Right, yeah, they're, they're, I was like.
They normally just don't let us see the invoice first.
Right.
We got to peek behind the curtain here.
We did, yes.
Oh.
It wasn't substantial enough, but still it was enough for that question, why, I mean, the next round did not have the attachment.
I'd imagine not. Barb?
What was this work for? You did the planning commission, that you.
Those departments are water, it wasn't planning commission meeting, it was part of the stormwater stuff.
Okay. All right, further comment on that? What else you got for us, Bill?
That's everything I got.
Town Hall is going to be, that project's starting on Thursday, correct?
The, off 3:00, yes.
Okay.
Yep, stuff's already, the loss has already moved out, and we're doing bigger, bigger, more, more bigger things tomorrow, that's another thing to get moving, and, yep.
Okay.
For Thursday.
Good luck. Anything for Bill from the board? Okay, Bill, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll go to Barbara Noe's Pulling, Planning Commission Chair. How are you, Barb?
Can you sit around me?
Yes. What do you got for us?
Not too much, the planning commission has just been dealing with some, mostly boundary line adjustments. We had a couple of them on Cameron Lane, and then maybe a possible minor celebration coming our way. Other than that, next week, the regional planning commission is taking up a local and town energy plan, and, and looks good for the determination of energy planning compliance, the pending process, who's saving, and the full board. So that's all I have.
Anything for Barb? All right, thank you, Barb. Short and sweet. Kirsten is absent, she gave us a copy of the budget information, she had nothing else for us. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Halloween party went off great. Everybody had a good time, worked out well, even though it's on the 1st, we had a very big crowd, and thanks to the eighth grade who helped run all the activities, in conjunction with the book fair, so that went well. Other than that, basketball, I'll sign up to travel going, so please feel free to sign your child up for basketball, that will start very soon. Mark DeKalb is for the 10th of December, February, oh, I want to say, Tuesday. The 10th of December, which is a Tuesday, right here, at 11:00, is a senior.
Got the band coming?
The middle school band, jazz band will be here playing.
Great.
And then we have our senior luncheon right here at, sorry, around 1:30, or 12:00, and everything, the headset. We do have a meeting that night, that's one of the times. That was on.
Great.
Other than that, that would have a lot of other turns, lines all set, so we should be good. Anything for me?
That's it, Mike.
Thank you for the candy, Mike.
You're welcome, that should last you a while, was JP.
Well, it's on his desk, so.
He's got it, I see.
Byron Hathaway, Road Commissioner.
I don't have a portable lot, I was busy today, didn't have a whole lot of time to care about or anything.
I understand we need a personnel executive session.
Well, I, we'd like to have a personnel executive session before.
Okay.
We did do over the budget today, the highway committee, and there he has some comments to go.
Certainly, certainly comments are welcome at this time, we're also going to schedule a, I think, when do you, do you figure you're going to be here next meeting or not?
I won't be here the next meeting, and I hope to be here for the one after that.
Do you have something?
We want to have a budget, strictly a budget, meeting to talk about all five budgets, but it'll be over the next couple, few weeks, we'll let you know when we schedule it, to make sure we can hammer them all out one night as a full board and ask questions, and a lot of, a lot of hard work went into these so far, so.
Couple of quick things, that you had referred to us the Columbus Drive drainage issue, and Highway Committee at this time is recommending no action be taken at this time. And then, do we want to mention the, you'll recall that we agreed to allow the Town of Clarendon to buy out our share of the roadside morgue, which means we're going to have to purchase a new morgue, and just a heads up about that because there's some good deals to be had right after the first of the year, so. And a question about that was whether we go out to bid, it will be a significant item, or whether we do something else, but I think Byron's going to get the specs together on what it is we want. And a question for the Select Board, should we cooperate on the purchase with the Town of Mendon? Which we would do two-thirds of the cost, they would do one-third.
Have we got, ask a question with a question, have we got our check from Clarendon yet?
No, I'm not sure if that check will be coming this fiscal year or after July 1st, because they may have the budget for it.
But that might make a difference if, whether or not we're able come January 1st to buy this piece of machinery or not, if we have the extra nine grand, right?
No, because it's coming out of depreciation account anyways, and I, I should write down on that depreciation account.
Okay.
Yes.
It would be the same as when you buy a fire truck, Josh. We'd pay for it, then you'd take whatever you get and put it back in.
For more, but at any point, you can get the check from the tractor, that would get returned back to depreciation.
So I sort of like Mary's question or idea, you know, we've worked really well with Mendon, it seems, from a board level in terms of joint paving projects and other things, unless you objected, I don't see why we wouldn't go in on a morgue with Mendon.
That was Byron's idea.
Oh, okay. What do you think?
I think that that's the way to go, and I think that should be the first step. We need to meet, maybe the Highway Committee with Byron, counterpart to Mendon, and discuss this, and then get approval to go that route, and then Byron and folks from Mendon, you guys can get together and come up with the machine you want to be looking for. We should do that way, we should get the agreement that we're going to purchase it together in place first, and then you guys can get a machine that would make everybody happy.
You like that idea, John?
I think that's a good way to go.
John Paul?
I do.
Good?
Yep.
All right, what else you got for us, Mary?
I think that's it, and highway.
What's the, what's the salt shed discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Too premature for that for now, or?
Well, it was just, Byron's looking into grant opportunities to add a salt shed, so, you know, that's, it's just the beginning of what we should maybe do. Go ahead, I mean, other than that, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, there's some grant opportunities, we missed the opportunity for this year, we just kind of came quick and put it forward, I think it's like a Congress September 10 period or something, we have occasions. And, not sure, it's through a Vtrans program, whether we could qualify or not, or I have to, I got to go into it more. They had, they had this similar program in the past, and it's kind of a backseat, there were a lot of towns that jumped in, a lot of towns that were situated near wetlands, or towns that were situated near major rivers or streams, that's what I need to make sure that all the sheds are built big enough so that you load trucks, you're loading on the truck, so everything gets built.
It's a.
Run off that.
That's certainly not the case now for us. That's certainly not the case now.
No, hasn't been since the shed is built.
Right.
Would you be able to?
So now that they've brought this back into some of the stormwater regulations, and helping to control runoff, so now that some of the other towns have already, you know, got their sheds, maybe some of the towns, maybe, what's the approval, maybe qualify.
Would you have to build a separate building, you think, or would it be some way to incorporate the two together, so you would be able to go from building to building? No idea yet on that?
No, I have no ideas on that.
And I think your other point was.
Physically get a tape measure out there, see what kind of room there is next to that existing shed, or maybe you end up having to look for a different location.
Yeah.
And then your other thought was that you?
There's a planning that's gotta take place there before we even think about applying company.
Didn't you also mention, I think, the corner that it would allow us to store, uh, full, full winter supply and get it delivered and put in and be done with it? Instead of having take deliveries on winter.
Well, then you're buffering yourself against the spot where it's.
Right. Well, and you might get a better?
Last winter we had one because of the railcars derailed down in Wusick, New York.
Right.
You know, for a couple of weeks there, it created kind of a headache with the railcars and created a little bit of a spot for it.
Okay. Anything else for us, Byron?
No, that's it.
Mary, good?
Nope.
All right, bye. Thanks for everything. Chris Clark, Fire Chief. Assistant Chief Del Venary's here as well. Larry, thank you for being here. Also our, uh, very talented transfer station manager. Chief Clark, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Uh, just a couple of things tonight. First, I also got a truck out of garage.
Looks very nice.
Tonight, I got some bylaws that we voted on to make a couple of changes. Not major, just a lot of words. You guys have a copy ready? Uh, so like, select one is gonna be changed to select four.
Cool.
Just to make uniform, the meeting tied to 7:00 PM, um, rather than having the monthly at 7:30 and the weekly at 7:00, all the meetings are at 7:00. Is the lineage in there too about the two-year terms for the officers?
I'm surprised at that. So I'm kind of surprised at, but.
What was, what were you trying to do there, Chris?
Go to longer terms for the officer, wasn't that?
Yeah, we were trying to, when Chief Chaukey was still here, they tried to, uh, they were talking about officers for two-year terms instead of one. Or wait for two years, and Chief was standing three.
Yeah.
Didn't pass.
Okay.
I know we proved the change. I'll second it.
Motion, uh, to accept the Rutland Town Fire Department bylaws with changes. Motion made by John Paul, seconded by Joe DiNaro for discussion. Mary?
Two questions. I, I think, let me find the page, the grammar, or, or, page five. This, you're talking about the election. If no officer candidate is available, and this position will be filled by an election of candidates. And I don't think you're electing candidates, you're just electing one from among the candidates, right? So I think the from was correct, but she crossed it out and put of, and, and that goes through all of them. I don't know if you want. And then I had a question about page nine, 5.2. Junior firefighters shall not earn points but shall receive $50 pay per year. That's, that's all they get?
Uh, right now, but actually next month, we're gonna try to talk about that.
Okay.
Because we have a few genius that need to play a few calls.
Okay. Or it says, or prorated fraction thereof, so that's even worse, but, okay.
The point is to have some compensation for insurance purposes.
Gotcha, thank you. All right, those are the only two things that I had questions about.
How would you like to change that, uh, grammar, Mary?
Well, if you, if you agree, I mean, I don't wanna upset the apple cart here, but I think you just go back to filled by an election from candidates. From the McKinley Avenue, for example, instead of of.
Will be filled by an election from candidates rather than by an election of candidates?
Yeah.
Is that all right, Chief, with you?
That's fine with me.
Okay. I have an original here, right, Bill? Do all, um, had an original. Is there a place for all board members to sign, or just the chair?
No place to sign, period.
Oops. Oops.
We'll sign the bottom of the back page, or the bottom of the last page? Is that good?
I'm not sure you have to sign, you just have to approve.
So motion's been made.
Well, that doesn't seem right, but.
I think it's better if we do sign.
Go ahead.
Only, only because it has been done in the past.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Coming around now for your signature.
I think you should be required to print your name.
You've been saying that for a long time now.
Two and a half years.
I think I, I think we got everything in the folder here, Bill, that needed, I'll put this in there.
You used a couple of folders.
For this I did, yeah.
That doesn't have a little black mark on it.
Yeah. Chief Clark, what else you have for us?
I don't have anything else for you.
We haven't been to the Holiday Inn, have we?
Uh, we have not.
Not yet.
Uh, anything for the chief?
Do you have some money, Chris, in the, uh, station building maintenance? I, I think you guys or the town ought to look into a real live flagpole for McKinley. Have you guys had that discussed? Because it seems like Mother Nature uprooted the other one.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Have you been able to get ahold of, um?
I have not.
So are we moving on from him?
Well, I don't know. I'll, I'll try. This is gonna be a tough time of year to find Mark Chrisell, because he's probably in the woods someplace, but I will try again.
Well, I think that, I think.
Either that or we gotta get somebody else on board and get this done, um.
I think, and we'll talk about it more at our budget meeting, but as we look towards Town Meeting Day, I think there's some that at least feel that we should have a question on the ballot authorizing us to spend X amount of dollars to hire an engineering firm to design that building. And I think we're, you know, we need to.
Is that the?
It wasn't really the design, I was trying to get a ballpark price of the building.
Well, we gotta do something between the way we did center station here and how Byron did the Highway Garage. Somewhere in the, I, I, I think everybody here is pretty disappointed by how this, the lack of things that didn't get done here and get done to our satisfaction. Um, and, and we wanna make sure we build a station that's, meets all the necessary requirements, so whatever that would take. I mean, we have a pretty good example. I don't know how much the rules have changed, but there are certain things you have to do, so. Whether we hire a architectural firm or we do a design build, I think we need to figure out some ideas along that route. And, and, and there will be, you know, probably a cost. How did Byron, when you did your building, did you put out like a plan? Or unless you?
I have a floor plan, I'll, I'll draw it up and dimensions.
Okay.
Right. nominal dimensions for the building, that sort of thing. And then I had a list of all the stuff that we need to be building from higher values in ceiling, higher values in floor, walls, um, you know, those kinds of things.
Okay.
The only thing I did spec out was doors and windows, you know, so I had cheap doors, I had cheap windows. The rest of the building was left up for the building to, you know, do the things, make the building cost up after, so we could get the bid.
Right.
So, you know, if you wanna call out on this, say, I'm probably.
Well, it's a learning curve.
Fifteen years, you may have to change the windows out, but, you know, changing the whole five windows at a time, this is the cost of that. And like the case of windows, it's a couple hundred bucks.
And those are things that we could figure, you could, you know, in a plan, but if we could go with a design build, you know, you, you need to have, um, the adequate height and the apparatus bay that's set by whatever. And, and so, and then your, your bathrooms are gonna have to be handicapped accessible and stuff. And then the layout of the building would be, uh, I guess if, if you go that route, the committee would decide how this is gonna look and what the footprint's gonna be anywhere. So, just a one, you know, I mean, a lot of stuff could be done in-house, but there are some things that we're gonna need some help with, is probably as far as meeting codes and stuff. Which I don't know, but, um, I will, I'll get you off another text and phone call and see if we can't get that wrapped up. Right now, um, and I think that I, I reported this to Chris and to you, Josh, that Mrs. Barrett is not interested in changing that.
Right.
Right away, so we're gonna have to look at how that's gonna shift the property line in back.
We gotta work with what we have.
Yeah, which, which is gonna make it a little more difficult, um, but anyway, we'll work around it, so.
All right, so you'll get after them.
I'll, I'll try again.
All right. Chief, uh, anything else for us? Anything for Chris?
Nope.
Thanks a lot. Chief Dumas. How you doing, Ed?
Great, how are you doing yourself?
Great.
So first off, we have the calls served for Austin.
Anything stick out to you, Chief? Certain things like the Benson call, that's stuff that you're working on from CFAC, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Chief on the calls?
I would like, uh, a short time after the personal.
Okay. We got personnel for Highway, personnel for police. What else you have for us, Chief? You're not gonna believe this, but I got a message today from Rutland Dodge. So I need to draft them another letter, sign it and have it notarized.
Is that the indemnification thing? Well, I guess the question is whether Bill was able to get ahold of VLCT.
Not today, yet.
Okay, all right, so we might wanna hold on that.
We're holding off on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would recommend we put that in place, even if VLCT sister is covered. That way, there we know we've, uh, we did the same thing for the first constable, the second constable and the fire officers that respond with their own vehicles. We ought to do the same for the Assistant Chief. And if they say there's coverage, great, then we've got public protection.
Does that mean we would pay first and not VLCT?
No, if there's coverage, VLCT would always be primary.
We would be secondary.
What, um, what's your desire in that, Mary?
You know, just, just for peace of mind for Ted, it, it's a gray area and it doesn't really expose the town anymore, that we're already exposed, but it puts it in writing and gives peace of mind to everybody that he knows is there.
Can we say it somewhere in here that it's secondary to the primary coverage of VLCT?
It would be anyway because we're the insured, but sure, you can spell that out if you, if you wanna.
Well, in that case, I would, I would move the, that we approve the defense and indemnity agreement, but add that we, the town would stand as secondary after a VLCT country.
Right.
So how do you want me to word that?
VLCT for some reason declined, so we would be primary.
Yeah, we would.
Just so you're aware.
Yeah. And is that what we are on all of the other vehicles?
Yeah.
Including yours?
Yes, but, but ours is limited to onward calls. This is a bit of a hybrid situation.
Okay. You okay with?
Yeah.
Who is Sharon was the other one in on that?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I don't think we made it.
Did we make a motion?
We didn't make a motion.
All right, someone should make a motion, probably.
Move we approve with the additional language.
Motion by Mary, seconded by John Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Chief Dumas, what else you have for us? Okay. Have, uh, have we seen any upticking calls or concerns or up at the mall and the parking lots now that the place is vacated?
No.
We haven't heard anything?
Nothing I've heard. The ESP ones, they probably the ones that go if you weren't there, so. I see none in that area.
Okay. Chief, we'll talk to you a little later, all right? Anything from the town health officer?
Uh, no.
Okay.
An investigation on that other matter is continuing.
Okay. Committee meeting updates, fire, uh, committee, I don't believe there was anything for us to talk about, right? We, we did the budget.
Yeah.
Nothing, right? Uh, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, thank you. We handled C. We handled B. Board discussed 2021 budget planning, so as we said, uh, we have the budgets, uh, and we should schedule a meeting to discuss, uh, as a whole with department heads at a later date. Joe has some conflicting dates, so if the board's okay, I'll get with him and then I'll reach out to you and we'll see if we can come up with a date that works for all board members.
Are, are we gonna try to do the budgets on just a night, just for budgets and not try to incorporate them in with, so it won't necessarily need to be a Tuesday?
That's, that's what I think.
That's what I think, just dedicated to the budget.
Because it could make for a very long board meeting.
Right, okay. Because we could do it like that, week of the.
When are you, you're?
The week of the ninth, if we did it Thursday of that week, I'm pretty sure we'll be.
The week of the ninth of December?
Yeah. That's a.
That still gives us enough time.
Yeah, we should be able to get everything done and then everything will be ready before Christmas.
We got a meeting on the 26th, then we'll have a meeting on the 10th.
How do we deal with those? Oh, like the, the listers are part of the general budget and the Planning Commission is part of the general budget. Do we ask in advance for proposals from those, the chairs?
We should.
Yeah, we should. And then we've got the whole, um, stormwater runout thing.
I mean, they could be there for that, Mary, right?
They should be, yeah, for their, yeah.
Howard should be there at that meeting for the budgets and, um, Byron.
I hate the Planning Commission. They're a little cut out a couple, two weeks ago for them to start putting that, taking that, you know, right in line, but.
That's okay, because they may, yeah.
So, I mean, that would, that would be the time to come and discuss it with us.
So if we did a Monday, December 9th budget meeting, and that means we'd have a Tuesday, December 10th Select Board meeting. The board in favor, okay with back-to-back nights?
I was thinking if we did it Thursday.
I thought you were doing it Thursday.
Thursday, is there a Planning Commission meeting that week, that night?
No, the 12th, no.
Yeah, my daughter's got a concert Wednesday.
Um.
So Thursday would work.
And I would be back, that week.
December 12th at 6:00 PM will be the budget meeting.
I sent you one, so out of your way, I'll make sure I'm home.
Um, transfer station is also part of the general budget.
Larry, should you put some thought to that?
I got the budget, uh, but Bill's, Bill wrote one up before he got done.
Yeah.
So, uh, when we had that budget meeting, I'm gonna let Bill in and we'll let, we'll listen to him.
Okay.
Be more informed about it than I am right now.
All right.
And then just Marty Wasserman and the emergency management part.
Howard, Howard and Marcia, you'll talk to them as well. I mean, I see what you, you guys went through and penciled, we agreed as a board to look at 3% pay increases, so you figured that for town employees. Okay, good enough for now, right, board?
Yep.
Light years ahead of where we used to be.
Oh, geez, I guess so. B, ABC is handled. Board discussing increase, rec, uh, okay, so D and E were at both, uh, committee, um, meetings I was at. So both rec and fire made a case that, um, for different reasons, the pool being the, uh, rec department's reason and the, uh, increased cost in trucks, amongst other things, uh, as the fire department's reason, that we should consider looking at a, a quarter percent increase to the respectful, of respected depreciation funds. Obviously, it would be a ballot question for March.
Did police talk about that too? Okay.
No.
Now that we actually have yours.
Yeah. So I, I got with Kirsten, just so we could talk some numbers here. If the board was interested, each quarter percent would increase, and I'm just rounding, but it'd be somewhere around $21,800 per department. Per year. That would be an increase on the tax rolls of $43,600. And then I asked her to break it down for me. So you can do the math, on a $200,000 house in the town of Rutland, that would be roughly a $10 increase to their municipal taxes for $43,600. My personal opinion, you know, I sort of went back and forth, is it worth, you know, asking for additional $10, knowing that we have other expenditures coming up? So I don't know, I'm sort of on the fence about it, but I'd love to hear from my colleagues.
Then we need to see some basic information as to why it's necessary and some projections as to what it's going to be used for before we consider it.
Well, I guess we could ask for some more hard figures. The calculation in the rec committee was basically about, right now, we're raising about $40,000 a year for the pool replacement. Mike's estimate is that we get, if we're lucky, another decade out of it. The city just paid over a million dollars for a pool. If we had another 10 years of the $40,000, that'd be $400,000, we'd be... Well, we don't need what the city has. We know that. Right. So the trajectory in terms of cost of a pool and what we're bringing in isn't enough. So that was the argument in the rec committee meeting, was do we elevate that slightly? And then from Chris, and department heads can jump in too, but from Chris, it was, you know, the cost of, you know, this, we need to look at some jaws-of-life replacement, that's $40,000. And then on top of it, we're looking at engine three replacement in two years, and that's going to be well over a half million dollars. Once again, they felt like, hey, if we could inject a little extra in that fund, it'd make a lot of sense in longevity terms.
And with the fire JP, we're paying for stuff that we didn't anticipate, like the air pack stuff, you know, that, when the budget, when this originally, they were looking just at the trucks. But we have some really expensive stuff that, like all the air packs that were just replaced were all purchased through grants. So there's some increases in there that, yeah.
Well, both of those make sense to me.
Right, right, and this is the way to go, and it fits within the criteria of what the depreciation funds are. So if you could project over the next 10 years, what increases, and that's hard to do for you guys. I mean, there was a big jump between engine four and engine one. There was, some of it was, you know...
Federal mandates, a lot of it, right?
Well, some of it was, but there were some things that we found, that the department had found, was that like, they went to galvanize stuff and stuff to meet the corrosion, because then they had some troubles with engine two stuff rusting out way before it should have, so it significantly increased the cost. And another thing is, just as long as we don't, you know, department heads have been pretty good about not looking at this as a big pool of money, you know, we can go spend it. You have to look at that long-range plan and make sure that you're spending, you know, and I think they do pretty good with that, so. Yeah, it would probably be worthwhile. The only thing that I can see with, the rec might run into a little hurdle doing it, because we just did it two years ago, wasn't it, that we added that money for the pool?
We did.
Yeah, so...
But it was, at the time, it was reduced from what it was originally the one.
Yeah. So that might run into a little hurdle where folks are going to look in and say, well, why didn't you just ask for this in the first place, or whatever. There has not been an increase in the depreciation for the fire department in probably about 15 or 18 years or more, probably prior to 2000, so it might be closer to 19. Has some merit to it, because of inflation rate on some of this equipment is just out of this world.
Mary, you're busy looking up something.
Well, I was, and JP's going to tell me about this. What is that fire, is it the Sutton Fund? What is that restricted to?
And Mary, that money...
And we can only use the interest?
Right.
Oh.
Right, and that money, that money does not belong technically to the town.
But if we use it for, it's for firefighters' equipment, right?
Right, but it's...
Interest only.
Interest only.
So how much is, does that, and does that get put into the budget so that we can actually count on using it?
No, it's a separate, it's...
It's counted separately, accounted for separately.
Okay, and do we use it periodically?
We do.
Okay.
When it's accumulated enough interest so that it's worthwhile.
Mary, most of the rescue tools that are on engine four over here were purchased with that money.
Okay.
That's where a lot of that money came, what it is. One of the things that's difficult to do, and I think you found this out already, is finding a good way that you can get a bunch of guys to agree on how to invest it. Byron has a little better luck, because there's only three of them on the cemetery, but they were given a portion of that Sutton money in the town fire department. And he has been much more aggressive and much better at managing it, and I think that we, the department should take some lessons from him in how to do it. If you put this out to the whole department to vote on, they're so conservative that usually it goes on for years and you get nowhere. Is that a good explanation?
It looks like last year it generated, what, $3,100, $36 in interest?
Right, so that's what you can basically spend.
It's on $225,000.
Right, and I think that maybe if, Chris, maybe you and Byron could sit down and come up with some ideas, or you, or designate some, you don't have to do it. But I tried for years to do it, and there's just too many opinions and too much going on, and it just goes, it's a very, very different...
I'm not...
No, but we could do better, Mary.
I don't think we need to do any decision-making, other than to make sure that if we have the opportunity to sweep the interest and use it for something, we should be doing it.
Right, but it's, but the board does not get to say where that money goes.
No, but...
The fire department does.
I think we get to say, you've got a little interest here, you should use that, too. I think we get to do that.
What I did when I was in Chris's position is, we came in and we wanted to buy some tools, and we had, we were earning much more interest at the time.
Yeah.
So we were generating maybe $8,000, $10,000 a year, and it accumulated, and so this is what we've got to spend, and can we spend this out of new equipment to do this in? And we did the same with outfitting some of the stuff at McKinley. So it's just that, in the last probably eight or 10 years, it hasn't been generating the interest it should have. And I think we, you know, but like I say, there was a point where a former board member just wanted to take the $2.25,000 and just spend it.
$250,000.
Yeah, buy a truck with it, or do something with it, and...
Apparently, we can't do that.
We can't do that. You can't touch the principle.
Restrictions, so that's fine.
So I don't, I don't think the decision has to be made tonight, but that's why I put it on the agenda, was to just plant the seed and, you know, have board members have enough time to think through it and see if it's worth our, our time going to the voters. I'm sensitive to the fact that the last few years we have asked, whether it was rec or we asked police, and then we had to go back the next year and say, oh, you know, the decimal point was off, so, hey, can you vote on it again? So I'm sensitive that we've gone down this road for the last few years, but I also think if we educate the voter and say, hey, it's $10 or $15 or $20 a year on your tax bill, and it's, you know, going to help us pay for a fire truck and a pool, it might be the right thing to do, so. Okay, any final thoughts on that? Good? I had two notes here that we need to talk about. I'm not on the town report committee, but... What? Why?
Yeah, I remember that.
Because Kirsten and I were together for the last, when we did the committee summons last time, the decision would mean there's all...
So you and Kirsten are all over this? Okay, you're good. Don't need board help. Okay. The camera heard it. And then the circle.
Oh, yeah.
We have two editions left with Carol. This December edition is actually her 100th publication. Carol wanted to be done at 100, she's agreed to stay on through the election. You know, town meeting day, she feels that's the most important circle publication on a yearly basis. But Carol has indicated she's retiring, and she certainly deserves it. I also had a candid conversation with Carol about, I was very uneasy, and I think it was a conversation maybe Mary and I had, a sidebar, but we have not paid Carol anything, we haven't compensated Carol, and I have a few ideas how we can thank her once she gets done. But the thought has sort of crossed mine and Mary's mind as we discussed, that we might have to have a stipend for somebody for this position. And I went to Carol, and I said, Carol, because we haven't had a lot of volunteers, quite frankly, step up and say, I want to do this, but I went to Carol, I said, you know, Carol, we haven't, you've done this for 20 years, or whatever it is, and we haven't given you a dime, and I feel like it could be an insult to you if we didn't give you anything and now we have to pay someone to do it. And she said, don't look at it that way at all. She said, this was a labor of love, and I did it for my community, and I didn't want any money, and she said, you probably will have to give someone a little stipend to keep it going if you want to keep the circle going. And I wholeheartedly think this is well worth our time to see it continue. It's a wonderful way to connect to the townspeople, and five times a year for this publication to come out, it's, it's great material. So, once again, no decisions tonight have to be made, but we need to figure this out sooner than later, because we're, we're running out of time. And so if...
We'll have to put it in the budget, too.
We'll have to put it in the budget, and so, department heads have thoughts, board members have thoughts, let us know, because we got to...
Do we have a likely victim to replace Carol?
I've, um...
Nobody stepping up to the plate?
I don't know. I, there's a couple people in mind, but, you know, I don't know. Bill, what's that? What's this mean? So we got to think about that as well. Oh, I don't believe I have anything else. Bill, did I miss anything? Bill, Joe? Mary? John Paul? Department ads? All right, at this time, I had entertained a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters with highway and police. By Joe, seconded by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone, thank you.